What is that noise?
It's Angie.
Oh, if you don't mind, just, you can, can you mute that? Or have her, have her unmuted except when she's speaking, because that way that background always won't be in there.
Hey Angie, can you mute your phone?
Just tell her to do it until she speaks.
Okay, thanks.
Much better, isn't it? Yes. Okay, at six P M. we'll call the meeting to order. If everyone will please stand, remove your hats, and we'll say the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Doctor Whaley will lead us in both.
Heavenly Father, we gather tonight for this meeting, please unite our minds and our hearts to our common purpose, the good of Blue Ridge. Give us the, the wisdom and the patience and understanding to work together efficiently and humbly and value each person's perspective. Guide us in our discussions and our decisions that they may honor you and serve our shared goals. Make us grateful for the opportunity to, to be here, for the country that makes us, gives us our, our freedom, with the strength that our country has shown in the last several days. Bless this state, bless this beautiful county, and finally, Father, bless this lovely city and help us have the wisdom to keep it on track and keep it a beautiful city. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angie, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, we will have approval of minutes from previous meeting, uh, April the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second, second? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Angie? Okay, Angie?
Yes, I wasn't in attendance either.
Okay, so you're both abstaining?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, uh, item four is an update from our city administrator, and I'd first just like to begin by saying, uh, very, how happy we are to have you here with us. I feel like that you've done an excellent job catching up. We've not had a city administrator in a year and a half and over a year. Exact number, I'm not sure exactly, but you've done an amazing job helping us to catch up with that, helping us with, uh, the finance department. So we look forward to hearing from you during this time. And hopefully, can everyone see the screen? Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that introduction and those kind comments. I just wanted to give the council a, a review of where we have started and where we have come together in our very brief time. As council may recall, um, I was engaged on April twenty-third, so just a little, just sixty days ago, in a part-time capacity contracted at no more than sixteen to twenty-four hours per week to try to offer some administrative and management, direction and oversight structure to the city, um, operationally in accordance with the city's charter and ordinances. Uh, because you have been some time without a city administrator or anyone in that role, there are many issues in areas that do need attention, but we agreed, uh, in April in the, in my service authorization that we would focus on a few key priorities, because my term with you does expire at the end of this calendar year. So we felt it was important to identify some priority issues that we would tackle between April twenty-third and December thirty-first. Those are, um, obviously managing human resources issues, including the current staff, hiring of any additional staff that we may need during this time, submission of the, uh, city's outstanding audits for both two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, uh, preparation of the next fiscal year's budget for two thousand twenty-six, which will begin on January first. Um, also conducting an operational assessment of the finance department, including its personnel contractors, and providing recommendations to make sure that we address all of the issues and we don't find ourselves in similar positions again in the future. Continued implementation of the standard operating procedures for the tax and licensing office, including, uh, addressing the backlog of occupational tax certificates and alcohol licensing renewals that the city was experiencing, as well as, uh, administering the city's current grants that we were in receipt of. So with that in mind, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on where we are with all of those priorities and a few other additional issues. Um, in the, in regards to the two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four audit preparation, um, as you mentioned, Mayor, the city has been without a finance director since October of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, you all did engage a consultant, a financial consultant, in a part-time basis in November of two thousand twenty-four. In December, you approved your engagement letter with the city's auditor, and at that time, she provided to the city staff, um, and maybe to others, what we call an audit document preparation list. It has some sixty-five items, and ladies, if you would move the slide forward to those items, please. Wanted to show you all, yes, so all of this is the au- audit document preparation list, and it goes to the next slide as well, of all of the financial statements, documents, proofs, calculations that are required by the city to be prepared in order for the auditor to actually come on site and perform their part of the work. So, and let, let me explain what the term audit means from, from a local government perspective. Oftentimes, the term audit for us, uh, as a lay term, will, will make us think that someone is coming in to look at whether we did things properly, or if there's some collusion or corruption or theft or things of that nature going on. And although the auditors do perform, uh, tests of our financial processes and procedures and look for any material weaknesses or deficiencies or wrongdoing, their primary obligation is to pre- uh, prepare the city's year-end financial statements for all of our different funds in which we hold and spend monies. And we have a number of funds at the city, F-U-N-D-S, funds. Those are the different pots, if you will, of monies that state law and the generally accepted accounting principles require us to hold, uh, different revenue streams and make different expenditures out of. The, the most common fund is called our general fund. That's the fund that most of our taxes, uh, and, and similar revenues go into. And we pay for services like streets and public works, parks, uh, licensing and police department out of that. And then we have a water sewer fund, which is like an enterprise fund. We are to run that like a business. We have hotel, motel tax funds, splosh, et cetera, a number of others. So we have to prepare for every fund that the city has, everything that's on this sheet that is on the screen for the next two pages. The city staff is responsible for preparing all of those documents and all of those calculations for each of the funds where applicable, um, in order for the auditor to come on site and begin their work so that they can then prepare the year-end financial statements for each of the fiscal years. Um, on May the sixth, I was engaged on April the twenty-third. On May the sixth, the auditor was on site, and we reviewed this list, uh, with the consultant that was engaged with the city at this time. As you will see, some of the items on the list were, are highlighted, uh, both on this screen as well as the previous screen. At that time, Mayor and Council, all of the highlighted items were still outstanding. I mean, they were incomplete, they were not prepared for the auditor, um, and therefore the auditor was, had to leave. She was, she was not equipped to, to proceed with her work. On May twenty-ninth, um, I met with a financial consultant, and he tendered his resignation to the city. On the following day, I engaged J A T Consulting Company, which is a governmental accounting firm out of Kennesaw, to begin work on audit preparation for the city on a not-to-exceed five thousand dollar basis. The reason for that not-to-exceed is because that's the spending limit that the mayor or the city administrator has under the purchasing policy. So on the not-to-exceed five thousand dollars, J A T began work in, um, audit preparation for both the twenty-three and twenty-four fiscal years. At that time, when they came on site and began working with our staff and myself, we became aware that the city's finance, the bank statements for the city's fifteen checking accounts had not been reconciled since September of two thousand twenty-three. So we immediately began work on reconciling the outstanding bank accounts, because as you will see, if you review these lists, uh, having reconciled bank accounts and accurate accounting of those checking statements is the fundamental work to be, be in preparation of our ultimate financial statements. Um, as of today, uh, there were eighteen statements that needed to be reconciled for two thousand twenty-three. All of those have been completed. Uh, for the two thousand twenty-four bank statements, um, there's one hundred and eighty statements that require reconciliation. J A T, working with our finance staff, has completed eighty of those reconciliations. Again, this is since May thirtieth. And today, we began reconciling statements for Sept- for two thousand twenty-five. Thank you. So later tonight, you will, you will hear, um, a recommendation from me and some supporting reasons why I'm, I'm suggesting to you, Council, that you engage J A T Consulting on a contract from now until December thirty-first of this year for the purpose of completing audit preparations for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal years, so that we can continue this work, uh, and submit the audits that remain outstanding and past due. Well, the two thousand twenty-three audit is past due, it was due last June thirty. Twenty-four audit is due June thirtieth, which is just six days from now. Because both, um, audits are and will be outstanding and past due, as you all know, the city's funding opportunities through various grants, loans, and other opportunities is frozen. Um, and we have a number of projects that certainly require those financial assistance, uh, from the state, including some utility relocation funds from the Georgia Department of Transportation for projects they are working on inside of the city limits, but which will require utility relocates for our water and our sewer systems. So we certainly want to become compliant as quickly as possible. And, uh, working with J A T and the finance staff, I think we're making very good progress on that. It would expect that we would be complete with the audit documentation preparation list and have those items, uh, turned in to the auditor on a very timely basis. And we have set up a, a drop box, so as we complete, uh, certain requirements, they are being sent to the auditor, uh, in real time, so that she can review those. Uh, in that same vein, w- I continue to prepare an operational assessment of the finance department, and some of the current projects that we're working on there is implementing a ticker system for our accounts payable, uh, department. As, as you know, the city has bills, some of which are due monthly, some are due quarterly, some are due annually. So we needed a system in place to make sure that we were accounting for those due dates, but also that we were planning cash flow appropriately. There was not a ticker system in place, so we are, we are currently implementing that. As I said, the staff is assisting with the audit preps and the bank reconciliations. We've also started training in our finance department. Um, the Carl Vincent Institute of Government offers certifications for local government finance staff, and our finance team has been assigned that training. And one of our staff members has almost complete, completed his level-one classes and examinations at this time. We're also training in-house, um, and so I personally done some training with our team, uh, particularly in regards to coding revenues and expenditures in accordance with uniform chart of accounts. Some of our upcoming projects in the finance department that we'll be working on is moving payroll administration and benefit administration for our employees to the finance department. Currently, that is handled by our court clerk and our utilities director. Obviously, that's not properly housed, so we'll be training our finance team on how to conduct payroll and conduct benefits administration. They're shadowing that process now, and we'll start training very soon and re- and reassign that particular task. We also need to implement an organizational chart with accompanying job descriptions for our finance team, uh, particularly in the areas of a director of finance, accounts payable, and revenue administration. And we'll certainly be presenting those to you probably at your next council meeting for further discussion, um, in consideration. The next issue in the finance department operational assessment that really became, um, obvious is in regards to purchasing. The city has a purchasing resolution that has been adopted, it's, I, I would call it a purchasing policy, which does clearly define the dollar threshold amounts that can be spent at various levels of staff and at what point a purchasing has to go to council for approval. What the purchasing resolution does not address is the process to implement those pot, those dollar thresholds. So for example, at what level of spending would a staff member be required to submit an oral bid? Hey, I've called up such-and-such department store or big box store, and I'm gonna buy a ream of paper, and they told me it was X number of dollars. Or at what point do I have to submit written bids? And how many written bids would I have to submit to show that we are doing an apples-to-apples price comparison and getting the best price on the products that the city, uh, needs to purchase? Another issue is that requisitions are not required as a part of the process. So a requisition is just that, is a request to purchase funds, which should be placed, uh, through the purchasing process. It should then go to accounts payable to demonstrate compliance. Hey, I'm requesting approval, I'm demonstrating that I need to spend X number of dollars. It's an appropriate expenditure for the task that I'm gonna do, and here's my documentation on the pricing that I received. It's oral, it's written, it's whatever. And the accounts payable clerk should be reviewing, um, those items. But it also, the accounts payable clerk and the approving authorities, a department head, a city administrator, a council member, should be looking to ensure that there's budget availability for those required purchases, or excuse me, those requested purchases. Currently, our finance software does not house a purchasing module, which shows, uh, whether or not a re- a requisition, a purchasing request has available budget availability, um, and nor does it track, um, actual encumbrances of funds. Our, our finance software will show expenditure of funds, but it doesn't show encumbrances of funds. So we're only showing monies after the fact, not in advance of the purchase. So I have actually worked with our software system, and they have sent, uh, quotes for adding a purchasing module to our current system. It will integrate nicely. The team, the staff team, will be able to submit into the system a requisition request. It'll travel through the appropriate approval, uh, processes. It will attach to it any oral or written bids that need to come, uh, into the process, and it will show, will demonstrate on the screen very clearly whether there's budget availability for that requisition or not. And if there's not, then there, you have to go through certain steps to override that. In addition, that module will also show to myself, to department heads, to council, to the public, not only what we have expended, but what we have encumbered to spend at a later date. So maybe I've approved a purchase order, but I don't have an invoice that has been paid on that yet. So now, Council, we'll be able to see how, what your real-time accounting numbers are. Budgeted, expended, encumbered, remaining. Um, that purchasing module has been quoted to us at a set of one-time fees of five thousand dollars. That includes purchasing the module, implementing the module, training the staff team on the module, um, all of the, all of the maintenance on it, and a recurring fee annually will only cost us six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, I'm gonna suggest that that's money very well invested, uh, for more accurate and timely reporting.
Does that include updates?
I'm sorry?
Does that include updates?
Yes, it does. Another issue that I was asked, although it was not identified necessarily as a priority, uh, but, uh, it has been requested by Council that we transition a, a police officer over into code enforcement, particularly for zoning, uh, taxing and licensing issues. I just wanted Council to know that I have worked with a police chief. We have a plan in place to detach a peace officer over to code enforcement, uh, when that time comes. We need a job description, we need an organizational chart. We also need a budget amendment to account for that, and there's gonna need to be some training that takes place. Uh, currently, the police department is understaffed, as many of you know, so we did not want to detach an officer at this time and leave the police department insufficiently staffed. So once, once we are ready, uh, with proper staffing levels in the police department, we'll revisit that issue as well. Next slide, ladies. On the renewals for the occupational tax certificates, uh, commonly referred to as a business license as well as alcohol license, I'm proud to report that the team has completed processing all of the two thousand twenty-five outstanding renewals for alcohol licensing, and all but sixty-five of the occupational tax certificate applications have been processed. Uh, we, we pulled some reports, uh, from our system. Candidly, I, I can't vouch to the, to the complete accuracy of the system, but I have no reason to doubt it. We're, I'm still learning this particular software. But it looks like the city has traditionally issued somewhere between six and seven hundred occupational tax certificates in any given calendar year, so we're down now to sixty-five. Those sixty-five applications are actually incomplete. They have been reviewed by the staff, and every one of those applicants has been, uh, we've attempted contact with them at least twice. Um, unfortunately, those applications remain incomplete. Mostly, they are incomplete in regards to some state-required forms that the state laws require the city to collect in the renewals of the occupational tax certificate, and we, the city, have to report those collections and the results of those forms in a report that we submit to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs on December thirty-first of every year. So it is important that we have completed applications. Since we have attempted to make contact through telephone and email with the applicants, and these sixty-five remain incomplete, uh, the team is currently working on a more formal notification with the city attorney to these sixty-five applications that will essentially say, you know, please, please complete your applications, or we're gonna have to consider that you are unlicensed for this year. And we'll, we'll continue that conversation at a later date. Um, we have previously discussed some corrective measures that can be taken to ensure that the backlog and lagging in time between application renewal submittal and application renewal approval does not happen again. Um, that was very problematic for both the city and the constituents. So those ordinance provisions are being prepared for you that will amend that system a little bit and make that process much simpler. As you may remember, we discussed alcohol license. For example, every renewal is treated by ordinance as a first-time application. So all of the forms, all of the background checks, all of the seating charts, all of the financial statements, all are required to be submitted by the applicants annually and reviewed by the staff annually. Council has asked that that be changed. Um, we've also, you've asked for some staggered submittal dates, so that we are not bombarded, uh, all at one time with applications, and then that delays the response time to the constituents and the businesses. Those ordinance provisions are being worked on and should be prepared no later than August, I would expect, for a first review by Council. Uh, farmer's market, and Council's very proud of the investments that you all have recently made and some upgrades to the farmer's market. Uh, so as many of you know, I hope everyone knows, that we'll have a ribbon cutting to celebrate those recent investments, uh, this Saturday morning on June the tenth, um, at ten forty-five for the ribbon cutting, and then a farmer's market, uh, will open at eleven and be with us until two. Uh, we are currently in the process of making our websites and social media posts. Uh, some, uh, advertisements should come out in the paper this week as well. In addition to the farmer's market vendors, we'll have live music, family events, balloon art, crafts, uh, games, all sorts of things for the whole family. So I hope everyone comes out and, and joins us at ten forty-five on Saturday morning for the ribbon cutting. And also, before that, look for the social media post about the farmer's market bucks that are being hidden all, all around downtown. You can use those at the vendors, at any of the vendor booths, uh, at the market on Saturday, as if they're cash. So go on your scavenger hunt and find your farmer's market dollars. It, oh, thank you, it is also on the radio. Um, municipal elections, as everyone knows, municipal elections are coming up this November. Uh, so we have taken a number of steps to begin preparation for that, including developing an operations calendar in-house, so that we, as a staff, can ensure that we are meeting all of our obligations under Georgia, uh, state law and city law timely for applications. Uh, we have verified that our publications and things of that nature are up to date. Uh, we've also been in contact with the State Ethics Commission to make sure that they have our current contact information and that we have all of the current documents and that, uh, commission, that the city council members are having their current forms, uh, submitted to the, to the State Ethics Commission. Our clerks have attended some voluntary training through the Georgia Municipal Association and are currently engaged in the mandated training that the Secretary of State's office requires for anyone who is gonna engage in the administration of local elections. Uh, we've added elections information to our city website, and we've contracted with a, a company that has handles our voting machines, for them to be here to calibrate our machines, to check their sufficiency, their readiness for elections, and also to train the staff who will be working on elections. Um, all that is in the works, and we are currently working on the preparation of qualifying packets. Qualifying is in August, uh, we will have packets ready sometime in advance of that. Then we'll have all of the rules, procedures, required paperwork and documentation, and any interesting information that candidates for office may need. Those are currently being prepared for everyone. Open records request, uh, the city, when I started at the end of April, was, uh, backlogged on open records requests. We have had, um, almost two hundred, maybe the number's higher by now, last I had checked, was almost two hundred open records requests, uh, received year-to-date. We're averaging about one a day, and most of those open records requests are pretty, uh, broad and in-depth. It takes quite some time, uh, to retrieve and find all of the records that are being requested, and then to make sure that we are properly reviewing those records for compliance with Georgia law, and what needs to be redacted is in fact redacted. And, and, uh, our clerks are new in their position, so we are training as we are going. Um, and we are, uh, finding additional training through the Georgia Municipal Association, the Carl Vincent Institute of Government, that our clerks will be attending as it is offered, uh, where open records requests are concerned. But I am proud to say that all of the outstanding open records requests that had been in backlog have been resolved. So we are being timely and we are up to date on any outstanding open records request. We are also working now to develop a policy with some processes and procedures for both our request wars and our staff on how to better and more timely handle those open records requests. Uh, a lot of that backlog was because of vacancies in the clerk's office, was where, we've addressed that as well. Uh, but look for that policy to come to you, um, in a future meeting. On the communication fronts, one of the improvements we've made in the last sixty days there regards our webpage. There was a number of, uh, default links, um, and pages and tabs on our webpage. All of those have been dismantled and taken down. Uh, we've terminated the broken links, we have erased the outdated and incorrect information. Uh, we've added a number of pages and tabs to our page, including elections, uh, pla- a new planning and zoning page, and a, and events page. Every year, the city is required to make a number of, uh, filings and reports to the state of Georgia of Georgia and various agencies of the state. June 30th is a big year, a big date for required filings. A government management indicators report, commonly called a GOMI, a report of local government finances, and a hotel motel tax report, as well as a report of local government finances are all due on June 30th of each year for the city. The 2024 report had been filed, but it needed correcting. We have corrected and submitted that. Currently under preparation is the 2025 government management indicators report. I expect it will be timely filed on June 30th. Also, the 2023, 2024, and 2025 hotel motel tax reports will be timely, will be filed with the Department of Audits and Accounts and the Department of Community Affairs. Our outstanding reports will be the 2023 and 2024 report of local government finances. We cannot file those until our audits are complete. The rules of the Department of Audits and Accounts, as well as Department of Community Affairs, require that the numbers on those forms come from our audits. They have to be audited numbers, but I have spoken with the auditor. She is adding that to her engagement, so as she completes those audits, she will, she will complete those forms and filings for the city as well. Your fiscal year 2026 budget preparation, another priority of council that I was tasked with, is actually underway. Now, it's in its very beginning stages because we are halfway through your 2025 fiscal year, and we are doing a number of housekeeping measures in your finance department that we talked about. I really cannot seriously begin 2026 until we have an accurate read on 2025. I would be very helpful to also have a trial balance for 2024. So all of those things are, are in process of being prepared right now. But what I am doing is reviewing what I can. So I have reviewed your 2022 audit, which is your last audit that's available. I have reviewed your 2025 budget. I've looked at your opt-out selection under House Bill 581, and I'm currently reviewing your revenue contracts. So splotched hotel motel tax, those revenue agreements that you may have with different entities, I'm taking a look at those so we can understand your revenue streams. And as I said, your 2025 bank reconciliations have begun so we can have accurate accounting for, for 2025 that will certainly inform 2026. We also are making a budget calendar that will be both internally for staff as we are operating and beginning preparations, but also for council. Will include a number of workshops where we will present to you the 2023, 24, and 25 numbers so that you can have a better discussion on what 2026 is and identify your priorities and match your priorities to expenditure levels for 2026. A couple of things next that we'll be working on in the coming days is the improvements and upgrades to the city's wastewater treatment plant that council has recently approved and invested in are complete. So we're working with a contractor and the engineer to plan a ribbon cutting for the morning of July 17th. You'll have more details to follow very soon on that. And the clerks and I are working with your IT team to evaluate our record keeping, our security measures, and connectivity of our information technology systems citywide, primarily to make sure that we have access to all the records, but also so that the city's technology systems can be insured by Girma. Girma is the property and liability insurance provided through the Georgia Municipal Association. There are certain standards that Girma requires for cyber policies. Your policy just renewed on May 1st, and so we want to make sure that in this year, we are actively looking at your technology systems to make sure that your, that you can have the cyber policy continue in effect. And so we'll be looking at that and bringing you some additional information in the near future. So mayor, council, that's what I have for a part-time 60-day report. I'll be happy to take any questions from council.
It was a really great report. A very great report. I very much appreciate the diligence that you have shown as it, as I've made clear through emails to the mayor, council, and city attorney. I've read every word carefully in the agenda and each of the supporting documents, and I ask you specifically about the yellow-lined undone tasks that go back to the end of 2023, and you can't answer the question because you weren't here. But my question is, it seems that through the end of the tenure of the city administrator, things were being accomplished and those tics were, were being done. When the city administrator announced his retirement 90 days before he left, we advertised that position. It was budgeted. There were responses to the ads, and the efforts to hire a city administrator met with resistance, and that did not happen. I would then say that the people that filled those roles, and I think there's four or five in each of those spots there, were basically chosen as Band-Aids, and many of them came out of our own employees. You know, so-and-so's a nice guy, and he writes the checks. But my question to the mayor is this, if we had had a city administrator that was doing equally, equally not necessary, but not necessarily worse than our previous administrator, would we be in this situation, or would this all be gone? That's a simple question. Would we be in this situation if we had had a city administrator for the last 18 months? Or would, or would it have happened regardless of who was in that spot?
Well, it is my opinion we would not be in this situation. I do feel that a city administrator is a vital role for this, for the city. You know, all of us have full-time jobs, and it's, you know, just to be honest, I, I know someone did an open records request on me wanting to know how much I'd made in my 16 years with the city. And surprisingly, it was probably like 30 cents an hour, so, so you can't expect. You've got to have a city administrator and to oversee. So my opinion is, I mean, and I appreciate the, the council who voted to move forward with this. All of you, you know, I think everyone here voted to, well, three of you voted to hire Ms. Cody, and that was the best decision you could ever have made because we have gotten so far behind. We can't just fill positions with warm bodies. We have to fill with qualified. You know, truly, we've not had a finance director since last year, and, and we're behind on our finance, you know, on our audits. So you, you have to have qualified people in these positions in order to make City Hall operate properly. You know, we're temporary, all of us. We, we come, we go. We're elected officials, and, but, but you have to have a standard of quality workers in City Hall to make it function.
Okay, I have another question, and that is about income. And this you did, did mention. Are we up to date with the charges that we make for the time that we are spending on open records requests? I know that some open records requests are very short, and you pull up a few emails. But when you have to go back through years of checks or statements and things, it takes many, many hours. Are we charging an hourly rate that meets the market in other locations for the production of open records requests?
We are not, council, and that's a great question. Georgia's state law, and the city attorney's here, and he can correct me if I misstate this, but as I understand the Open Records Act of the Georgia state law, it says that the first 15 minutes that it takes a competent member, qualified member of your staff to retrieve the records as requested is to be performed without charge to the requister. But at minute 16, the city is entitled, under the law, to charge for the time of the lowest rate of pay for the most qualified, for the qualified competent person to perform that retrieval. And that time, in my view, should be tracked and should be charged. You charge it at that hourly rate of that person who is deemed qualified to, to make that records retrieval. And under the law, we would send an estimate of that time and cost to the person making the request. They would pay the estimate, then the retrieval would take place, and an invoice would be produced, and, and we would then, at that point, you know, square up, balance the charges with the requister.
What about the per-page copying costs?
That is also provided for in the statute. There is a copying cost that is provided for in the statute. I don't require, I don't recall the per-page, but I remember it is, it is given. And the amount of time that the city staff is currently involved in retrieving records and fulfilling requests is, is very burdensome to the rest of the community because every time you pull a staff member or three to pull those, to meet those requests, that's a staff member or three that is not serving the rest of the public and providing the public services that we're here for.
I know that some members of the public are aware that in the last two and a half months, I have had three phone calls from members of the state legislature or equivalent that began with, "The governor is worried about Blue Ridge because you've not filed the filings that you listed for us." And why? And none of those have lasted less than 30 minutes. And I think I answered, you answered the question, was that they would all have been done if we had somebody in the city administrator's seat, but as I understand it, from looking at what you presented, all mandatory filings were filed on time, and all of the checkbooks were balanced until September of 20, whatever, when Eric announced his retirement. And if I'm true on that, if that's not in, in an error, then the reason that we're in trouble is because the city council failed to act when they could have filled that seat. And I'm really so glad you're here. You remember, I, I, I said, the woman's going to do good work, she's going to be part-time, she's going to work very hard. I think you've done a great job, but, I mean, the consultants that you're having to hire, having to hire you, having to hire everybody else, is money that could have much better been spent on somebody sitting in that, that office. That's all I want to say. I mean, I think this is an indictment of this city council, me included, for failing to act in an appropriate manner on more than one occasion when we had the opportunity to, to do something that would have prevented it through.
Yeah, Mandy, you, you are certainly doing an amazing job. And again, I thank the council for putting you in place so that we can become productive, that we can do what we are here to do, serve our community. And I think you're getting us back in the right direction, so thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of agenda or motion to amend. Do I have?
A move, we approve the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay. The next item, we're going to open up for public hearings. We actually have three public hearings that are in accordance with our ordinance pertaining to garbage collection in the city. So the first one, there's going to be a public hearing in consideration of a motion for a finding for public convenience and necessity in granting of non-exclusive franchise for garbage collection for Waste South LLC. So this public meeting is now open. I will allow 10, up to 10 minutes for anyone in favor of Waste South LLC to speak. And we will grant the same to anyone opposed to this.
Ma'am, mayor, is this the right time to mention the, all, all three applicants in their entirety? According to the analysis of these three applications, the first application that you, on the agenda, this Waste South Agenda application, is complete and has no items that were incomplete. The second application has incompletions. I'll just leave it at that. But they are substantial in that they, they, the law requires the limits of insurance and copies of insurance policies that were not submitted. The second application, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how to fix it, but I had originally made my discussion about waste management by saying that it was a Texas company that we would have difficulty filling, but as I read, go back and read it again, it is not a Texas company. The name of the company is Georgia, Georgia Waste Management, and therefore is a Georgia company.
Systems, Doc. Georgia Waste Systems.
Yes, okay, it is a Georgia company, and therefore it would appear to me that the applica, the required portions of the application that apply to Georgia companies would require that the management of that company meet those provisions that they did not meet, and that we would be best served to take those two applications, give them a chance to make them whole, as you did for 65 business licenses for somebody else, and bring these back next month for public hearing when they have a complete application.
Okay, I'm, I'm actually going to close the public hearing for right now. Let us discuss this, and we will reopen for yours, okay? How does council feel in regard to what information has been given?
If they're incomplete, I agree with Doc.
Okay.
Same.
Same. Okay.
So we probably need a motion.
I think, yes, let's have a motion to remove the, the last two from the public hearing. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go ahead, go back, and then open up a public hearing for the first applicant.
I saw, I saw.
Are these being tabled for a future meeting, or just being removed?
Tabled, tabled, to allow them to complete the application and come back next month.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table that we will table these until the applications are complete. Is there a second?
That is B and C, correct?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Dr. Whaley, Jack?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Angie?
Yes.
Okay. So we will now open up the public hearing for Waste South LLC. So at this time, we will allow 10 minutes for anyone in favor to speak, which I know you've done this previously. If you'd like to come up again, that would be great, and then we will allow for opposition. Okay? Okay. Come on. Yep. Up to the microphone, please.
Thank you. I've got everything turned in, so I mean, that wasn't, I didn't really have anything to say. I was just waiting on the process. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, is there anyone opposed to, or anyone else, anyone else in favor, I should say? Okay, is there anyone opposed to Waste South LLC receiving a license? Okay, I will close the public hearing at this time, and we will open it up for discussion for Waste South LLC to receive a license. Is there any discussion amongst the council?
A move, we accept.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, I'm going to do a roll call vote again. Let's do, Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And Angie?
Yes.
Okay. So you should be good. Okay, at this time, we will move on to the next item. This is an action item on the agenda. This is a first reading in consideration for an ordinance providing for the general election of the city of Blue Ridge, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our city administrator and let her explain the process.
Mayor, I'm actually going to refer to our city attorney on this.
This is an, an ordinance that we adopt every election year, basically sets forth the date of the election, the date of early voting, the qualifying period, the qualifying fees, and designates which post, which positions are open for election, and most importantly for our purposes, designates who is going to serve in the various capacities as election superintendent, et cetera. So this is just a first reading. I would just note that I did make a few changes to what was circulated last week, so what is in your packet in front of you tonight is the, the latest version of that, unless there are further comments, should be ready for adoption at the July meeting. Are, are we behind on this, too, Chuck? We're not behind i- in the We're not behind i- in the sense that we have not failed to meet any deadline. I think as a matter of historical practice, this is something that we have typically adopted in February. Um, so in that respect, it's later than we normally do it. But I will say, we, we've still complied with every deadline we're required to meet and we will comply with every deadline.
So there's no reason to have a special meeting on this topic?
No.
We can wait till July.
It can be adopted in July, but we do need to adopt it in July, so.
Okay.
Okay, are there any further questions from the council?
We, this, we do not vote. This is a first reading, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, the corrections that I asked for are in it. I just looked, so I, I, let's go on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, the next item is a consideration of a motion to approve or deny consulting agreement and service authorization, uh, number one, between the city of Blue Ridge and JAT Consulting Services, Inc. through December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, for JAT to provide preparation of services for the two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four fiscal years. And as we've just heard, that is of probably utmost importance that we do this. So is there a motion?
What, what are we paying these folks?
It's on page, uh, eighty-eight.
I understand, Doc, but I want the public to know what we're paying so that there's no misconceptions.
So Councilman Whaley is correct. There is a fee chart given in the packet that ranges from eighty-five dollars per hour to two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. The primary person assigned to our account is charging one ninety-five an hour.
How, how, how long do you think this is gonna take, Mandy? What are we looking at?
Best estimate at this point is about ninety days.
So eight hours a day for ninety days, six hours a day, five hours a day?
No, no, this would not be an eight-hour-a-day, five-days-a-week. Um, but this is a company that we are urgently asking them to fit our requirements into their, you know, full set of clients and calendars and commitments. Um, they, I engaged them on May thirtieth at a not-to exceed five thousand. Um, as of last week, she had one, she had eight hours left to bill us at the not-to exceed five thousand. So she's moving rapidly. And our best estimate, again, because we are having to go back and do things like reconcile the bank statements before we even can, you know, begin on the more intense audit preparation, our best estimate at this time is about a ninety-day delivery on the preparation materials first. But that would be twenty-three and we have twenty-four.
And you'll be overseeing this entire process?
Absolutely.
So if it gets out of hand, you're gonna let us know it's out of hand?
Absolutely. I have no, um, I, I've worked with JAT Consulting, um, a number of times and have full confidence in their, not just their ability, but their timeliness and reasonableness to perform these obligations for us.
And I will mention to the council that our auditor, Tacey Jo, is very impressed with this company and, uh, highly recommends that we continue to work with them, so.
Is there a way that we could like?
Chris, are we speaking tonight, please?
I didn't know if there was a way that we could like, you know, have a check-in at a certain point, point in time with it.
Yeah, now, and Mandy will be overseeing the progress and giving you, I'm sure you'll give updates even at the next meeting. Yeah, every month you'll be getting an update from Mandy, so, yeah. So you, next month, we should know exactly where we are as far as finance, which is, which is great, yeah.
Much more accurate assessment can be given on timelines and expectations for costs, uh, no later than next month.
I don't think any of us believe this is not gonna cost us. We're behind in this. Has to be done. I just don't want it to open one what we have. I don't, I don't want just an open check, just a blank check.
Absolutely.
Hey, can I say something? Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah.
Okay.
You can put her up.
We can.
I understand the importance of this, but I, I also cannot, um, vote on something that I have no idea of, of what it is. I mean, I've just done some math here. At a hundred and ninety dollars an hour, forty hours a week, at twenty-four weeks to the end of the year is a hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred dollars. And just twenty hours a week at a hundred and ninety per hour for twenty-four weeks is ninety-one thousand. I can't, I, I mean, I, I'd like to have some. I believe we need to have some kind of ideal of what it's gonna cost or have some kind of cap to when it meets it, then we gotta come back and approve it. It's gotta be approved before the council. We can't just get an open checkbook. I, I mean, I understand they're a reputable company, but I just don't think that would be good stewardship of the taxpayers' money. That's my personal opinion.
Is there a way of putting a cap on it and coming back?
I think, Christie, if you're looking, this is a reputable company. They're working with our auditors. They know they have tasks at hand that they know they've got to get completed. We are going to be monitoring through Mandy. She's going to keep, keep us updated as to what is being done. What will cost you is if we've got a five-million-dollar project coming up where we have to get sewer water lines put in on Highway Five and we can't get a grant, that's what's gonna cost us. It will cost us millions. So you, we've got to look, we've, we've, as Dr. Whaley said, we've put ourselves into this box. We're, we're almost, we're trapped in a corner. And whatever it takes, we're gonna have to pay to get it out of this, of this box. And she is a very qualified person who's definitely, she's already gotten us where we are today with the, with the report that you've seen. So I feel like if we work with and let Mandy do her job in monitoring that, you know, we, we, we've got to have faith and trust, but.
Let, let me ask a question. I, I hate to always be the one that's cutting those under the chin, but I went through their website. I checked with several of their governments, one of which had been Mandy's, uh, one, one of Mandy's jobs. Uh, I got nothing but good reports on their work. I know that our auditor came up here to do an audit and had two pages of yellow lines and couldn't do it. And that it's inappropriate for our auditors to prepare the statement that they're going to audit, so that's impossible. Therefore, you've got to find somebody who has the skillset to do the job. And basically, you gotta hire a quarterback and a quarterback costs a lot of money. I would also ask that one of the people who were objected to the, to the city administrator make the motion that we hire this person so that the city council can vote to correct the problem and it's gonna cost us money. And I know Angie likes to save money and I totally agree with her, but I don't see where the options are.
The only thing I would add is there is a thirty-day termination provision. So worst-case scenario, either party would be able to terminate the agreement, uh, with thirty days' notice. So that, that is kind of a stopgap.
Yes, if people aren't, if you're not satisfied with the reports. Are we ready?
Always come in and you get a report anytime you want.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It's not like we're just giving them a blank check and saying, go with it.
Yeah.
There'll be some checks and balances.
Is there any repercussion of backing out after thirty days or before the thirty days?
No, it's a provision.
Just have to give her thirty days' notice. And this is something, honestly, it's embarrassing. And where we are right now, we gotta get out of this.
The good thing is we backed down after thirty, or at thirty days, so.
Yep.
Well, I just wanna say that I've been, I've seen, been involved in councils and seen and, and it's, there's never been a city administrator. So it is possible for a city to run without a city administrator. So this is, this is, this is not like, you know, we've caused this to happen because we didn't have a city administrator. The last administration ran without a city administrator. The previous administration ran without a city administrator. So, you know, yes, we should have all been doing a better job of, of knowing what was going on in the city.
Well, I disagree with you, Angie. I've been on the council sixteen years and we've always had a city administrator. And the last mayor did not want to call him city administrator. He was called a project manager. But he worked in the capacity of city administration. So we have always had one. We have always had one. Okay, um, okay, is there a further discussion? Is there further discussion amongst the council? Do I have a motion?
To hire this?
To hire, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you, Jack. Is there a second?
Bill?
I'll second.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Bill Whaley.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Christie.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
And Angie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I would ask, Mandy, again, that you, if the council, any member of the council would like an update at any time, I'd like you to give them that update. Make sure it's there, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve or deny renewal of a contract between the city of Blue Ridge and Air Med Network for residents of the city of Blue Ridge in the amount of four thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. And I was unable to meet with them and Ms. Cody met with them, so could you give the council an update on this?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, mayor. The city currently has a contract with Air Med Care called a municipal site plan, mayor, and this covers any individual who resides within the boundaries of the city of Blue Ridge. And the, uh, with this contract, any of the residents of the city, uh, if they were in need of an emergency air ambulance service, would be provided with that service pursuant to this contract, um, under its standard terms and, and conditions. Um, primarily that the transport be a pickup from a location within Fannin County. Um, and if the covered individual, if, excuse me, if the individual transported is uninsured at the time of the tra, transport, Med Trans Corporation will bill the covered individual at the Medicare allowable rate for that transfer, in that transport. The current, uh, contract, as I said, covers all residents of the city at a standard annual rate of fifty-five dollars per person or roughly forty-eight hundred dollars. Um, that contract is, excuse me, forty, forty-six hundred dollars, forty-six eighty to be exact. And that contract is set to expire August eleventh of this year, so just, just a few days from now. Um, I did meet with the representatives of Ed, Air Med Care and they have offered a renewal of this contract and these services for air, um, ambulance emergency services for residents of Blue Ridge at the same renewal rate. Uh, what we did ask them to do though was provide a contract term that would align with our fiscal year, which also happens to be the calendar year and it just makes for ease of budgeting and accounting. So a renewal has been presented to you in your packet for these services from August eleventh of two thousand twenty-five through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six that would cover all the residents of the city in the amount of six thousand five hundred and one dollars.
I asked this question when they were, we did this last time. Does anybody aware of any Fannin County resident that has taken advantage of this service that is covered as a Blue Ridge resident? I know many Fannin County residents have been here, but I'm not aware of any that have been in the city, that are city, they are, okay, fine. Answers my question. I move we approve it.
He, uh, we have a motion on the table to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, have a roll call vote. Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Angie.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item is actually under discussion. And what we need to discuss now, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about our planning commission. We are lacking three individuals for the planning, or we have three currently on the planning commission. We need, uh, to fill two vacancies or discuss how we move forward with the planning commission. And I believe, uh, Mandy has a few suggestions and would like to talk to you guys about that more.
Thank you, mayor. There is a memorandum, uh, included in your packet, mayor and council, that sets forth the sections of yours, of your zoning and land development code that refer to the powers and responsibilities of a planning commission and what their roles are. Um, in sum, the role of the planning commission is to review, uh, amendments to your zoning ordinance, applications for annexation and applications for rezones. Uh, that to serve in an advisory capacity to the city council and pursuant to your ordinance to hold the one required public hearing uh, that the Zoning Procedures Act requires on those types of matters. Um, the ordinance does specifically state that it requires three members to constitute a quorum of the, of the planning commission. We currently only have three members and we are beginning to receive some rezoning applications that would require an advisory review by the commission. So I wanted to bring that to the attention of the council. Um, you have a couple of options. I'm sure the city attorney may want to offer some as well. You could certainly leave it at three, but if we were, had less than three, um, appear at a call meeting of the planning commission, we would not have a quorum. We could not do business, which means the applications would come directly to council without the benefit of an advisory review. Um, you can certainly make nominations for the two vacant seats. You can announce that you're gonna receive applications for the two vacant seats. Um, you could not have a planning commission, although a planning commission is generally, uh, referred to as a best practice by the Amer, uh, most planning, uh, schools of thought. It's not required by Georgia state law. It is required by your local ordinance. So you could, uh, consider not having a planning commission, not having an advisory review, not having another body conduct your public hearing, but, but bring those things directly to the city council for public hearing and review. So you have a number of options. Um, Mr. Attorney, did I leave any out that come to mind?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Um, but because our code provides for a planning commission and because we provide, or, or we, uh, have certain responsibilities of the planning commission, I would recommend to you that we, uh, at, at least appoint one more, if not two more, so we don't run into the issue of not having a quarrel. And then at some point, you know, y'all can make a, a bigger dec- decision about whether to have a planning commission and if so, what duties and responsibilities to assign to the planning commission.
How many things do we have to put before them right now? You said you had things coming up. Do you have anything now?
I do.
Didn't you tell me three today?
I, I have two, if not three, rezoning applications to put in the pipeline. At this time, yes.
What's in the pipeline?
That's what I have in the pipeline.
That's what you have in the pipeline.
Two to three rezoning applications that need to be processed.
Chuck, you, you advise we fill those positions?
Uh, I would, since, again, we, we have a planning commission in the code. We assign certain duties and responsibilities to it, so I think we should, we should fill those positions. And then again, it, Mandy's right, you're not required to have one and, and a lot of smaller jurisdictions don't have one. Um, but, but defer that decision maybe to later on, 'cause that's gonna require, you know, amendments to the zoning ordinance and all that kind of stuff.
So the council then needs to find out how, they wanna figure out how they need to do that? Whether we take nominations, applications, or?
So tip it, well, I mean, if, if, if you're wanting to do it tonight, then typically you would open the floor for nominations and then at some point you would close the floor for nominations.
From council, nominations from council.
Yes, from council. And then you would have a motion to appoint one or more of the people who have been nominated. You don't have to do it that way, but that's typically how you do it.
What if you wanted to do applications instead of appointments? We just have to wait until next month, do the applications?
I think you're kinda getting back, yeah, because we do have, we have several people waiting on their, um, rezonings. And they've been waiting, so we need to get that ball rolling. So really, if you guys have, I mean, we can meet with the three, just they would all have the three show up, you know? Uh, and really what you're doing, if you appoint, if you have suggestions, do you guys, anybody? Dr. Whaley just sent two suggestions. Do you guys have any suggestions? We can open up the floor. And it could be a county resident. It doesn't have to be a city resident as per our ordinance.
And you don't have to do that tonight either, I don't believe, Bill. If you wanna take applications and that's what the council says, they've got the decisions.
Yeah, you can do that.
It could be done that way.
So, do you guys, how you want to move forward?
We can always call a special meeting if we need to.
I mean.
Put them in place.
You have three people. As long as the three people show up, we can, we can work with what we've got and then open up for applications if you feel comfortable with that. That's, yeah.
Let me ask a question. The three that are there were appointed by the mayor, correct?
No, they were appointed by you guys.
Well, what I mean is, they did not apply. We, we, not we, as a council nominated them.
Yes, correct, correct.
We did not seek the public's, uh, s-
So I believe we sought, yeah, actually Eric did send out, he requested applications for the first two members. I believe Angelina Powell did not submit anything until afterward, after she'd been appointed. But, uh, I believe the first two did when Eric was with us.
All right.
Yeah.
So could we put out applications and then if we had to have a special call meeting?
Mm-hmm.
What, what, if we found somebody just in the next week or so?
Yeah, we could do that, yes, yeah. Is that what, how you guys want to move forward then?
I would, I think we give the public an opportunity to. I would, I, I think we give the public an opportunity to, you know, anybody that might be interested, rather than just appointing someone.
Yeah.
That way we can see what we have as far as applications, and then, you know, if we get ten, we pick through three, and, just like we do the regular process, and that way it's fair for everybody.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
How long do we run the application process, though?
I think you do it as quickly as you can, yeah.
I agree, I'm just asking.
And, and hopefully we'll get, so hopefully we'll get some, you know, I don't think we have to set a limit, if we start getting good applicants, we can start discussing.
Well, we can start getting applications, if you don't care to send them to the council, the council will throw them.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And then maybe we can expedite this situation, and get it taken care of.
Yeah, that works.
I agree.
Everyone in agreeance?
Agreed.
Okay, so we will, we'll do that, and, okay, the next item, uh, public comments, this is, uh, I will read what's underneath it, do not misconstrue, this is a question and answer session with the mayor or council, limit three minutes per person, all comments should be addressed to the mayor. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
For those of you who don't know me, I am Nathan Fitz, I was on the council previously, and I am here because all of you guys, including the mayor, um, received some emails recently of an ongoing, um, ongoing issue that still hasn't been addressed, and it is in regards to the executive parking money that still has not been addressed, that was taken unauthorized, and this has been all the way to the state level at this point, and from what I'm being told is that the city has to request the state to be involved, for them to get involved, and it is my opinion that the council and the mayor has to look out for the best interest of the city residents, and if it's investigated and nothing's wrong, then no problem, there shouldn't be an issue. However, from every legal opinion, and the mayor knows this because she was involved, from every legal opinion that has been obtained on it so far, that has not been the case. But again, it takes it off of everybody else and puts it in the hands of the authorities, and to let them investigate it and decide if there is an issue or not. To me, when there's taxpayer money that was taken unauthorized and missing, I think that there's an obligation of everybody to have it investigated, and again, if nothing, nothing happened, then no, no harm, no foul. So, I know all you guys, um, have received the information, and most of y'all that I've discussed it with indicate that you're in favor of that, and I know the mayor responded and told me that she didn't have a vote, but, you know, that, that, that she was in favor of it as well, so I'm asking for formally something.
Actually, I did not say that, I said I would support what the council chooses to do.
You said you know my opinion on it, and I will support the council one hundred percent, I have the email, if you'd like to see it.
I would love for you to read it.
Okay, you want me to go get it?
Yes.
Okay.
Precious memory that I sent that to the, uh, district attorney, I sent his first request to district attorney and to sheriff.
Sure. Thank you. Did you interrupt the demand?
That's fine. Actually, we are not going to engage at this point, but you can.
No, no, I'll be glad to read it.
That's okay, we're, I've been, given legal.
I'll, you know, I'll, I'll email it to y'all.
That would be great, I think we were all.
Just the records, the documents, yeah.
So, continue with your time, and if you will, start back, and we will not be engaging.
Um, so, that was pretty much it, I'm just asking for, you know, the council to do something formally, so we can get this issue resolved one way or the other. Um, again, I know that most of our city taxes went up, um, I, when I was talking to somebody today, the property taxes went up three times what it normally was this year, and with all the money that's being spent frivolously, frivolously and stuff, if everybody and the brother can sue the city and get money out of the city, our property taxes next year are gonna be raised six times to, to be able to match the budget. So, I mean, at some point, the, y'all have gotta stand up for, for what's right, and all these people gotta quit being able to sue the city for every little thing, and we gotta recover money if people are taking it unauthorized, because I'm tired of working hard and, and paying the city taxes, and then these people just thinking that it's free money and, and filing lawsuits and taking it, it's, it's absolutely unacceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Can I do something, Mayor? Rob, would you get with Nathan and look into this, please, to get the process started?
I understand it has to go to the, uh, district attorney's office.
That's correct, it does, but we're gonna get the chief to start. If you wanted some action, we're gonna do some action.
So, actually.
Chief, do you mind?
Jack, when he first, first broached this, and if, if you go back, way back with the emails, you're aware that I did forward your original complaint to the county sheriff, to the district attorney, and I think the attorney general of Georgia, I sent it to him, I did, I sent it to all three of their personal emails, which I have, I did not receive any interest, but his original complaint that we, we got some weeks or months ago, I did forward to those three individuals.
They, they can't get involved, just so you know, there's.
Hold on a minute, Nathan, I understand, I understand what you're saying completely, but it has to be the sheriff or the chief that calls in the GBI if it needs to be done. So, I'd like for the chief to look into it first, if that's possible, anybody disagree with that? And then moving forward, if the chief finds something that he believes needs to be investigated, I'm gonna let the chief handle that. You good with that, everybody good with that? Chief, you good with that?
Uh, again, just to be clear, though, that from the state level, they said it had to go through local government, through the district attorney, and then they request the GBI of the FBI to be involved, that's what they said.
Local government, district attorney.
And then?
Local government, then he can take it to district attorney.
Y'all know, I'm just telling you what they told me.
And then the district attorney can take it to state level.
Okay.
But we're not allowed to call the GBI in, Nathan, that has to be done by a judicial official, which has to be done by the chief or the sheriff.
Okay.
Okay, so that's where the process starts.
Okay.
And that's where we're gonna start the process.
I'm, I'm trusting that's correct, but I'm just telling you what I've been told from the state officials.
Chief, am I correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is a.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're actually, we are violating our own, uh, policies, so at this time we're going to disengage with commentary.
Do you have a question?
No, we are not dis- we are disengaging with this, we are moving on to the next person, you may have a seat, okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mike Hayner? So, I was on the previous city council as well, what are we investigating?
An allegation that money was stolen from the city, Mike.
How was it stolen?
I have no idea, I read the emails, but I don't have any proof in front of me, nothing in black and white, so I'm gonna leave it to the chief.
'Cause I, I still remember when I came on the council, I looked at the contracts, I had concerns, but when I started looking at the percentage over the eighteen months or whatever, we took in almost three hundred thousand, well, over a four-year period, took in over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we kept eighty percent, twenty percent went to the parking, so I'm trying to figure out, with the contract, the city made about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and the parking group made about eighty thousand, so I, my question is, what are we investigating?
We have an allegation that money has been embezzled or stolen from the city, we're not having allegation that we're deadbeats up here, nobody's standing here saying we're deadbeats, what they're saying is, is that taxpayer money has been stolen from the city, that needs to be, that's an allegation.
So, okay, I'm, I'm gonna stop everybody right there, I'm going to turn this over to our attorney and let him.
I like a legal picture.
I, I think we're making.
This is not the time for a legal picture.
It, it is not.
I mean, respectfully, this is just public comment, and, and everybody has three minutes to address the council, and I would just encourage the council to let the public have their freedoms, and then, if the public would like to have the city attorney render an opinion on something, I would encourage the public to, uh, talk to their elected officials.
But I do believe, at this point, council needs to disengage with conversation.
Yeah, so.
But I'll, I'll give y'all a copy of the, I can give y'all a copy of the contract and everything.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so council, okay, um, anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening, council and mayor, uh, Ms. Cody, I want to say thank you for your hard work and, uh, service to the city so far, the city has really needed a, a city admin since Soroka resigned, I'm not sure why the audits, uh, were not completed in the years leading up to tonight, resulting in state funding being withheld until the audits are completed, hopefully you can go, get it all sorted out for one hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Hyatt, I wanted to wish, I wanted to wish you a happy anniversary for your failed lawsuits against the city, Angie, Bill, and Jack, I haven't heard a word about it since you withdrew everything, it was a big deal to sue the city, cost the taxpayers a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for six months of defense lawyers, and then drop everything like it never happened. In your anti-litim notice, you demanded twenty thousand dollars for your lawyers, why are you not reimbursing the taxpayers for your bogus lawsuits? I do enjoy the new next request system for open records that the city's put online, it makes it much easier to review public records, like the police reports from the night of August nineteenth, twenty seventeen, when councilwoman Rhonda Thomas and Mayor Haight went to the police department at eleven fifty-seven PM, and quoting the police report here, were two females at the police department acting crazy, yourself and the mayor at the time were so hostile it forced multiple officers, including former chief Cersei, to file an anti-litim notice for police officer harassment, intentional, and, uh, negligent infliction of emotional distress upon government employees, threat of wrongful termination, hostile working bo- environment, unlawful abuse of power, those are serious allegations, Madam Mayor Haight. Please don't run.
Is there, is there, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Hope you have something more positive.
Positive? No, I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, Doc Whaley was looking over my shoulder when I wrote my, my, uh, notes for tonight, um, and I'll just start with that. I read in the News Observer and saw the articles and publication of a couple of emails from Angie Arp and Bill Bivens, um, complaining about lack of communication coming from City Hall, I find it ironic seeing how the chaos and dysfunction at City Hall was created by the voting block of Arp, Taylor, and Bivens from the last couple of years, this block has consistently voted against hiring, um, qualified city managers and finance directors, they thought they could do this themselves, and if you saw the presentation by Mandy, I don't know how the hell you could think you could do that, um, but they thought they, they could do it better, um, and I think Jack Taylor can attest to that fact right now, after having done with the city, I'm sure he's tired of having to deal with it too. You can't even blame the mayor since, um, you've, you've, uh, taken a lot of her power away, um, quite frankly, Blue Ridge can't afford another four years of the Arp, Taylor, Bivens voting block, Blue Ridge deserves better than that, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, at this time, executive session, consideration, uh, we will be entering into executive session, consideration of a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to O G, OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash one, for all matters properly excluded from the Georgia Open and Public Meetings Law, specifically pending or potential litigation settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions, discussion of future acquisition, disposition, or lease of real estate, discussing or deliberating upon the appointment, employment, hiring, disciplining act- disciplinary action, or dismissal, or performance of public office or employee, discussion of record, of a record exempt from disclosure, or consideration of the record can, cannot be had without disclosure of the record, no action will be taken, uh, during this session, however, council will return to open session during which matters may be voted on, and we, I do expect for the council to vote on decisions after executive session. Do I have a motion to enter into executive?
So, move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Angie?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.